And, uh, sitting in for the Borough Manager is Steve Hutter. So Steve, roll call please.
Roll call. Councilman Katina?
Present.
Councilwoman Covey?
Present.
Councilwoman Demko?
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Here.
Councilwoman Berry's? Council President Delos?
Here.
Mayor Kabistak?
Here.
All in person.
Thank you. Uh, we start off with a presentation to, uh, one of our local business people. At this time, uh, I would ask, uh, our small business liaison, Councilman Beers, and, uh, Councilman Sarsfield, and, um, Sergeant Kennedy, uh, if you would join me in, uh... Steve here?
Here. Oh, there he is. We have a certificate of appreciation for, uh, Jim, uh, I've known Jim many years, you know, uh, he's put his heart and soul into the town, helped us with, uh, some car cruises and, you know, crime watch, and, I mean, Jim was always looking out and still continues to look out for our little ones in the town. And, um, you know, Jim's, uh, off to Florida, he's gonna be deeply missed, but I'm gonna do my best to, uh, stay in touch. But, uh, let me read this certificate of, uh, appreciation to James Concilla. The Borough of Carnegie and the Carnegie Police Department hereby recognize James Concilla, owner of D and J Records, for over thirty-eight years of support to the Borough of Carnegie and the Carnegie Police Department. And it's signed by all of council members and, uh, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. There's not much that I have to say. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
Have a great retirement.
Thank you.
So am I.
We're gonna continue on, uh, the presentation by Mr. Lobal was, uh, completed earlier. He had some scheduling constraints and he had to leave. Uh, so we're going on to, uh, the public comment phase. If you have any comments to make regarding the listed motions on the agenda, this is your opportunity to make those comments. Uh, you'll see there are several, uh, agenda items here. If you have any comments to make, you can do so now. Okay, big man, we'll, uh, we'll start into the motions, uh, starting with administration and finance. Uh, Councilman Katina, please.
Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on June eleventh, two thousand twelve.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, this is a roll call motion, Steve.
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the July bill list with the exception of the seventeen hundred dollar Third Street Jazz Festival payment.
Second. Comments? Councilwoman, do you explain that, uh, change?
Uh, we're making this simple change because we wanted to make the Third Street Jazz Festival payments without project, a separate line item from the general bill list.
Comments, anyone?
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the seventeen hundred dollar payment for the Jazz Festival on Third Street.
Second. All in favor, Steve again, Steve, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
No.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
No.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was motion C now, so your list of motions that you have are going to have to be readjusted, uh, accordingly. Please continue, Councilman.
Motion to reappoint Chris Green to the Chertus Valley Industrial and Commercial Development Authority for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Second. Uh, Councilman Katina, is this a roll call vote personnel?
Yes.
Steve.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
No.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to reappoint Sue Kelly to the Chertus Valley Industrial Development and Commercial Development Authority for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Second. Roll call votes, Steve.
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a request by Sergeant Andrew Teoros to enter the Deferred Retirement Option Program effective August first, twenty twelve.
Second. Comments?
I, I would just like to say that, uh, this drop pen to is similar to the arrangement we made with, uh, Chief Harmon, um, a year or so ago, um, that, uh, he'll apply for, we'll look at the numbers and, and, uh, you know, obviously Sergeant Morris will be looking to select the retirement date.
Is the, um, do you know Sergeant Kennedy, if the date is fixed already?
Date has been chosen.
Yeah, date would be chosen, it'd be, he'd have to leave four years from the date, I guess, from August fourth, if you want.
Correct.
He can leave in between that period, but the other four years he has to live.
Alright, so no longer than four years, but do you know if the date has been?
I don't know if he's chosen today.
Twenty sixteen is this? Alright, so it is four years.
And, and, I mean, Mr. President, um, it's not an agreement, I mean, it is, I guess, an agreement, but it is a special state authority for the drop. It's not something special that's being done for Sergeant Morris.
Yes, this is a program that's provided for, uh, all police that work in the Commonwealth.
And I just wanna, you know, uh, thank Sergeant Morris, although he's, by the way to go yet, that, um, you know, up to this point for the service to these, given us, uh, he is one of the top detectives in Allegheny County, he does a remarkable job for, for us. Thank you. Any other comments?
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion G has been dropped, so we'll move on to motion H, which is motion to direct the Borough Manager to take the necessary action to obtain an appraisal. Borough-owned property parking lot located at the intersection on Mansfield Boulevard and Broadway Street. Um, this is the lot in front of the lot, uh, in front of the dollar, general store.
Second. Steve, roll call vote please.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Councilman Katina. Code enforcement motions, Councilwoman Covey, please.
Thank you, President Delos. Motion to approve a curb cut at seven zero three Washington Avenue.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to direct the borough solicitor to pursue the necessary legal clearances to demolish properties located at three zero eight Seventh Street and six four five Ridge
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman Covey. Uh, Councilwoman Demko, please, Public Works motions.
Motion to ratify an amendment to Articles of Agreement executed on June fourteenth, twenty twelve, extending the required minimum salt purchase date to December thirty-first, twenty twelve.
This is, uh, an agreement with Cargill where we have an agreement to buy salt from them, we had to purchase so much salt, the borough had to purchase so much salt. Because of the mild winter, the borough did not use the appropriate amount of salt that was required to be purchased under the contract, so the amendment is that Cargill is going to store the salt that the borough didn't use or didn't take delivery of, and then it will be used next winter before the borough has purchased new salt on, purchased more salt. And there's no cost increase tomorrow.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries.
Motion to approve payment number nine and final for release of retainage to Robinson Pipe Services for the twenty-ten Sanitary Sewer Lining Project in the amount of sixteen thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Second.
Roll call vote, Steve.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number one in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents for work completed to date by Shields Asphalt Paving for the twenty-twelve pavement maintenance program. Second.
Comment? Go ahead.
Um, with this, uh, as they were doing pavement, there was some damage to one of our roads, um, and I just wanted to assure the residents, if you are on drive, that, uh, proper repairs continue to be sought out, and from, uh, the report we got from engineers will be completed by them, um, to make right on the road that we just paved a year or so ago.
Yes, this, uh, payment is not the entire payment, uh, for the pavement maintenance program. Some of the money is being retained to finish these repairs. Any other discussion? Steve?
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number one and final in the amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars to A W McNabb for the emergency demolition of three oh seven Center Avenue. Second.
Comment?
Yes.
Um, this, uh, emergency demolition, um, took place while under this house on Center Avenue. It was a safety hazard to any of the children and residents in that neighborhood, the roof was, uh, cracked off, uh, wasn't properly, uh, confined, um, so that's why it became an emergency for us to, uh, get that house torn down.
Any other comments? Steve, roll call please.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number one in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents to McElroy Paving Company Inc. for work completed to date on the remaining part Phase One project. Second.
Comments?
It's just great to see you getting started.
Steve, roll call vote please.
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the purchase of the twenty-twelve Ford F-three-fifty-four-by-four regular cab truck from Allegheny Ford at a cost of twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars utilizing the Co-Stars Purchase Program. Second.
Comments?
Well, um, you know, Public Works, they went out and they, they found medical and, um, they've obviously been very helpful in our budget, you know, finding things at reasonable cost, um, you know, when, whenever they have their needs, they go out and they do a study and they find, uh, equipment at reasonable prices for us that's end up saving the borough taxpayer this town money. So I wanna thank Superintendent Hatchard and his department for doing that.
Uh, Councilwoman Demko, is this money budgeted for?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Steve?
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berry's?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twelve Ford F-three-fifty-four-by-two regular cab dump truck from Allegheny Ford at a cost of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars utilizing the Co-Stars Purchase Program. Second.
Comments, anyone?
Uh, I think same with the last one. I, I bet I would like, uh, our solicitor, Mr. Solicitor, do you wanna explain what the Co-Stars Purchase Program is and how it meets our bidding, how it meets the bidding requirements of the state?
Well, that's exactly what it is. It, it is a bulk purchase program through the state where the state, essentially we're paid eventually on state contracts and purchase things, and because the state takes bids on them, um, then the borough can, i- it essentially meets the requirements for the low bid if we find something on Co-Stars that we just, that we are seeking to purchase.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Steve?
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilman Sarsfield, please, uh, public safety motions.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have three motions this evening. Motion A is a motion to permit the closure of Flynn Avenue between five twenty-five Flynn and the intersection of Flynn Avenue and Logan Street on Sunday, July twenty-second, twenty twelve, between one PM and five PM for the resident block party.
Second.
Comments?
I just think it's, uh, great when, uh, residents get together in their own neighborhood and, and have these celebrations, I think it brings people closer together, um, and I just think it's, it's terrific to see this.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion B is motion to permit the closure of an unnamed alley behind Hill Avenue on Saturday, July fourteenth, twenty twelve, for a resident block party.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion C is a motion to permit the closure of Fourth Street between Barrett Way and Diamond Way and Third Avenue between Third Street and four oh six Third Avenue between the hours of six PM and eleven PM on September sixth, seventh, and eighth, twenty twelve, to accommodate the St. Louis Fan See Parish Festival.
Second.
Comments?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, I just wanna thank, thank, uh, Father Pecking from St. Louis Fan See. He, he had a meeting and invited all the other churches and asked them if they were willing to participate or if they needed to participate in this event, and he also tried to make sure that the streets were not closed all day. So he worked it out so that the streets were only closed during festival time. So I, I think he was, he's trying very hard to make sure he works with community and others, so thank you very much, Father Pecking.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all the motions I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Beers, please, uh, Councilman Community Development motions.
Uh, motion A to adopt Borough Ordinance Number twenty-three seventy-six and ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amending ordinance number twenty-three fifty-two, establishing a shade tree commission.
Second.
Comments?
There were just some minor modifications to the, uh, ordinance and, uh, the, the shade tree commission's moving right along is, uh, tonight before our meeting, we received that six thousand dollar grant from Penn American Water, um, in the fall, we should be receiving our first group of free trees, so, um, I, I think for the short time that shade tree commission has existed, we've done some positive things here in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, roll call vote, Steve.
Councilman Berry's?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilman Katina?
Yes.
Council President Delos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion B to adopt Borough Resolution Number twenty-twelve dash twelve, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie declaring that there are several vacant and dilapidated structures in the Borough of Carnegie that individually and collectively constitute lighted property as defined in the urban redevelopment law.
Second.
Comments?
Um, Mr. President, if I could, uh, explain this, um, the borough is annually applying for CDVG grants to demolish dilapidated and vacant structures in the borough, this is the next application for this year would be CD, CD thirty-nine, um, the COG requires this, um, resolution to be passed, declaring vacant dilapidated structures as a precursor to borough's application for the CDVG grant money.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion C to adopt Resolution Number twenty-twelve dash thirteen, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie vigorously opposing the petition by Roslin Farms to secede from the Cartleton School District.
Second.
We have, uh, a resolution, uh, we have a copy of that. Yes, we do. Mr. Beers, would you like to read that resolution?
I gave you mine in the back room. Borough of Carnegie Resolution Number twenty-twelve dash thirteen, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, opposing the petition to the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas to secede from Cartleton School District. Whereas the Cartleton School District was formed in nineteen seventy consisting of the Borough of Carnegie, Borough of Roslin Farms, and Borough of Crafton, and whereas the Cartleton School District has provided a quality education to thousands of students during the past forty-one years, and whereas the Borough of Roslin Farms has petitioned to secede from the Cartleton School District, and whereas the secession of Roslin Farms from the Cartleton School District would not only leave the remaining members of Cartleton School District in a, uh, non-contiguous school district, but also leave Roslin Farms in a de-contiguous school district, which would be detrimental to the students of all three municipalities. And whereas, after reviewing the results of PSSA, SAT, and ACT exams administered from the years two thousand nine through two thousand eleven, Carnegie Borough Council believes that the secession of Roslin Farms from the Cartleton School District would adversely impact the remaining students of Cartleton School District while having no identifiable educational benefits for the students of Roslin Farms. Whereas the transfer of Roslin Farms to Shortress Valley would be detrimental financially and otherwise for the Borough of Carnegie and the Borough of Crafton. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Borough, Borough Council of the Borough of Carnegie strongly opposes the secession of Roslin Farms from Cartleton School District and urges the Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Education to recommend to the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas that the petition of the group of residents seeking to remove Roslin Farms from Roslin School, Roslin, from Cartleton School District be denied, resolved and enacted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Carnegie this ninth day of July two thousand twelve.
Thank you. Would anyone up here like to make a comment regarding this, uh, this, uh, resolution?
I just think it's a very positive step for us, um, that, you know, we, we are showing the support with, with our current, uh, directors of the school district, um, I think that it, it speaks well for our citizens and our students, um, that we do not want, uh, the succession of one community from that district to have a negative impact on all the students, um, not just the students from Carnegie, but the students from Crafton and the students from Roslin Farms. And from what I've been told, Mr. President, that, uh, it seems like there, there's only a handful of residents that are really streamlining this, um, and speaking to some of the elected officials for Roslin Farms, it appears that none of them are in support of the succession, nor any of the directors for Roslin Farms is supporting this, but I think it was important that we went on record as municipality to show the directors of the district our support for them.
It is true that the, uh, the Borough of Roslin Farms has not, uh, taken a vote or position on this action, uh, that some of the residents in Roslin Farms are taking. So it's true, this is a, this action to secede from the school district is, uh, is being led by a group of residents, and the, uh, the Borough Council of Roslin Farms has not, has not endorsed it, but they also have not, uh, opposed it, they're, they're staying out of it because it is a divisive issue within their community. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just, uh, like to make a quick one, this, this resolution is not just a cursory, um, event, what it is, it's, they're actually building a case and they'll examine that case, and this helps, uh, with the school district's case on whether or not, uh, the Department of Education will see fit to granting the secession movement. And, and I will say that, you know, uh, while I, I think a lot of people don't agree with and everything, you know, you, there's, there's no doubt that, um, this is how the system is supposed to work, though. If you, you know, if you want things changed, that's how you do it, you go door to door and try to get things changed, although I don't agree with it, but I do commend them on their, on the effort because, you know, that's, that's the way our system was designed to, uh, when you have an issue, to take it door to door and move it on up the chain, so...
All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Steve, uh, for the, for the minutes, uh, indicate that the resolution is signed by all members of council and mayor. Uh, at this time then, we'll go to committee reports and we'll start with, uh, Councilman Katina.
Under administration of fire hands, Mr. President, I have nothing to report this month, I haven't had a chance to review or, uh, see it out yet.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Covey, please.
Yes, this month, the Covey Department Officer, Mr. Roman, I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Public Works, Councilwoman Demko?
Uh, just one thing, the public work, our public works guys are gonna be, uh, start to, uh, pay the alleys on Monday, and this is the first time that our guys are actually gonna be... on Monday, and this is the first time that our guys are actually going to do paving. So we wish them luck and hope it turns out great, because then we can get them to do all of them. That's it.
Thank you. This was something that we approached Public Works with last year, was a way...